It's a roll call.
Glenn Albrecht.
Here.
I'm here, Steve Stupack.
Here.
Dana Smith.
Here.
Mike Taylor.
Here.
Nick Schumacher is virtual, maybe?
Not yet.
Jim Farm.
And President Olson.
Here. Our first order of business tonight, we have moved the comments by members of the public to the beginning of our agenda from here on out. So we do have some speakers this evening. The procedure is three minutes and at the 30 second mark, and will be, you know, with the little yellow card and then with the red card should let you know when your time is up. I did receive one email from a fellow board member and stuff, and I'll read that one last after the group is done. So the first speaker tonight, Mary Smith Johnson. You want to switch? First speaker tonight is Christina Kintop.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Christina Kintop, and I am representing 14 former board members. Tonight with me, I have Rob Morehouse, Jonathan Asp, Craig Peterson, Mary Smith Johnson, and Laura Gapsky. So, dear Superior School Board, as past members of the Board of Education with over 100 years of experience among us, we write to you regarding the continued service of Steven Stupack Senior as a board member. We believe strongly that the board needs to maintain its integrity by adhering to its policies and the laws and seek to fill his position, as it appears he is not a resident of the districts. Ethics and leadership is a fundamental aspect of effective governance and public service. These are non-negotiable qualities, and we stand together today to demand that you adhere to the Superior School Board Policy 0142.5, which simply states, "The office of a board member shall become vacant immediately upon the occurrence of one of the following events: H, the incumbent has moved his or her residence out of the district." Wisconsin State Statute 120.05 parent D also states, "A school district officer shall be a resident of the school district in which one serves." In the article published by the Superior Telegram on July 28th, states very clearly that the current board member does not live in our district. Along with a very simple background check, it shows that Steven Stupack's current address is 7725 Congdon Boulevard, Duluth, Minnesota. The same address shows up on the St. Louis County, Minnesota Property Details Report as 100% homestead and shows that Steven and Gina Stupack are taxpayers and owner of the property. The tax ID number is 1028947. In addition, the tax statement states that the house was built and occupied in 2018. In the packets that we will provide when we're done here, you will find several corroborating facts that support the proof of Mr. Stupack's residency. Furthermore, in accordance with board policies, the Wisconsin State Statute 46946.12, no board member shall act or fail to act in his/her/hers position as a member regarding misconduct in public office. So we stand here today, and our question is simply this: If you are not adhering to your policies that were adopted by Neola, by this board, what other policies are you not adhering to? And as taxpayers and citizens of this community, we shall be informed as such. Under the policy, the seat is currently open, and we urge you to move forward with working towards filling the seat. It is imperative that this Superior School Board has a full and functioning board to accomplish the goals to provide a quality education for the children of this district. Elected officials must have the trust and competence of the people they serve. Without integrity and honesty, they risk losing the trust of their constituents, making it challenging to garner support for their policies and initiative. A loss of... Is that the end? I'll finish my sentence. A loss of trust can lead to public disillusionment, cynicism, and a lack of participation in the democratic process.
Our next speaker is Rob Morehouse.
Thank you. I'll just continue reading. The duties of a school board member involves overseeing the governance and management of the local school district. School board members are elected officials who play a critical role in shaping education policies and ensuring the success of students, teachers, and the school community. Some common duties of the school board members include policymaking, developing and implementing educational policies that align with the district's goals and state and federal regulations, advocacy, representing the interests of the school district and advocating for funding, resources, and policies that benefit the students and the community, legal and ethical compliance, ensuring the school district operates within legal and ethical guidelines, including compliance with state and federal laws and regulations, conflict resolution, addressing disputes and conflicts that may arise within the school, community, or between stakeholders. School board members often work collaboratively with other board members and district stakeholders to make decisions that best serve the educational needs of students and the interests of the community. The role is essential in ensuring the overall success and improvement of the school district's educational programs and operations. Ethical leadership serves as the foundation for a thriving democracy and a just society. We, the undersigned, have all read this letter and given permission to adhere to our names to be attached. We strongly urge you to move forward with filling the vacant seat and restore integrity to the Superior School Board. Sincerely, John Asp, Josh Christie, Laura Gapsky, John Hendricks, Sheila Kaya, Christina Kintop, Murray Klun, yours truly, Mike Meyer, Craig Peterson, Mike Cronio, Jody Slick, Mary Smith Johnson, and Dave Tunnel.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Smith Johnson.
I'm Mary Smith Johnson. I'm with the members, former members. I believe that based on the information that we have, this school board member should walk out the door and not participate in this current meeting unless someone has some reason to justify that he is, should be here. Steve Olson beat me in 2020, and that first meeting that that school board member was to begin his time on the board, he was there and I was not sitting there. That should happen as well. Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Tickenen.
So my name is Monica Tickenen. I worked for the district for 30 years, and I had the privilege of attending school board meetings, one or two for sure every month, and committee meetings for all those 30 years. I watched school board members get elected and serve oftentimes for a single agenda item. They soon found out that being a board member is a lot more responsibility than their single item. They had to understand business. They had to understand curriculum. They had to understand human resources, buildings and grounds, insurance. How many of you know what umbrella insurance is? One person? Well, I saw another few hands. It isn't just because they want to have revenge or have an agenda to get even with somebody or get somebody else off the board or find a new superintendent because they disagree. It better be because they're coming to represent our children. My grandchildren. My daughter who works for the school district, other people in this room who have daughters, mothers, fathers, brothers who work for this school district, who, when they serve as a board member, can be respected, trusted, honored for making the decisions about curriculum, hiring, firing, wages, benefits. What is the school district going to do to make Superior shine now?
Thank you. Our final speaker, Laura Gapsky.
I just want to say thank you to the board for the time today, and I really appreciate moving public comments first. I think that's something that we've always wanted to have in the past in my past six years serving on the board. Yeah, we're here to talk about Steve Stupack, and I believe as well, reading the criminal complaint and the evidence that you all have it before you, that it's enough beyond a reasonable doubt to ask him to resign or remove him as a board. We have not heard any accountability. We have not heard you say you're sorry, and I understand you're fighting it, and that's your due process to fight criminal charges in the court system. But when it comes to the school district, I hope you do what's right. And I think it's really important, too, to think about serving on the board with you the three years that I did. Taxpayer responsibility was something that you preached a ton. You talked a lot about fiscal responsibility, and actually, I had a lot of respect for you because you always brought that lens. And then to hear on the flip side that you were stealing from the district because you were not residing here, you were taking a stipend that was meant for, in our district, for school board members and taking that money away from the district when it should have been someone that resided in this community. And so I see that as theft from the district, from our children, from our teachers. Yeah, it's not a lot of money, but almost 300 bucks a month of a stipend. Add that up since 2020. We have some problems here, and I think, again, that you're just not ethically living up to the person I thought you were and looked up to you on the board. This has called into question the legitimacy of the votes that Steve has made, such as some of our most contribution, or controversial, rather, large votes, such as the public school closing of Lake Superior. I mean, what is the legitimacy now? Thankfully, we have Kyle, the school district, to guide us, but this has caused a lot of question, and parents are wondering, does that make that vote invalid? And so this is, again, a great burden to the district, and he should be held accountable for that. I just want to also point out that this cannot be a fictitious witch hunt. We have law enforcement, such as fellow school board member Gallagher. You know what it takes to charge a case. You can't just not like someone, and we throw a case to the DA. Law enforcement has to have beyond a reasonable doubt evidence to refer to the district attorney. The district attorney is another safeguard we have in our criminal justice system that safeguards situations that would be out of resentment, hostility, some kind of backlash. And these respectable entities have all said, "We have reason to believe that Mr. Stupack is residing over the district." Don't tell me you don't trust law enforcement. Don't tell me you don't trust our district attorney. Lastly, I just want to say again that we need to serve our children and our district and follow the policy, please. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I've got you, Craig. I've got you with groups. Yes, Craig Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I've never liked to give up the rate to talk. I was born that way, I guess. Yeah. Mine won't take three minutes. Well, you probably don't even need to turn the clock on. I have a policy issue, and I have just a couple of things to say about that. Do, Steve. If you want the policy changed, you go through the channels, work, change it. Secondly, this is not a brand-new policy. I was on the board my first term and starting in 1978, and it was a policy then, and it's still a policy. I think it's very clear. So you have some choices. You could try to work to change the policy, or you can just say, "I will comply with the policy." I hope you do the right thing. It's not only just for you, it's for the district, staff, parents, students particularly. It puts a bad mark on us, and I personally don't like that. Thank you.
The final comment, I'll read that. This is from Joshua Christie. Joshua's a former school board member. I do believe that all of us had received a copy of that, and then he requested that I read this. "I am writing to the board as a concerned citizen and as a former member of Superior School Board. I served one single term from 2009 to 2012 before my federal job took me on a different path to Hawaii. I know I am no longer a resident of Superior or the surrounding area. However, I still have numerous friends and family in the Twin Ports. I am proud that I am a product of the Superior School System. I attended Lincoln Elementary in Central Park, East Junior High in East End, before graduating from Superior Senior High School in 1997. My father was an educator for nearly 30 years at the high school. Numerous cousins, siblings, and myself all graduated from SSHS. The Christie and Nelson families have created and helped finance scholarships in the district for graduating seniors, to include the Gerald C. Christie Memorial Scholarship and the Timothy and Nanbeth Memorial Scholarship. This shows the dedication of our families have to the students in Superior. Many on this board know me or my family. Mr. Albrecht, you served together on this board. Mr. Olson, you worked at the high school with my father. Mr. Gallagher, your father taught at the high school with my father. Mr. Schumacher, I have known your family fairly well over the years, even being employed by your relatives. To the remaining board members, we have family, friends, and acquaintances in common. It pains me to write this letter. To see one board member, Mr. Steve Stupack, bring shame and discredit to the board, I am literally ashamed to be from Superior and have served on this board, committing such serious crime as electoral fraud. Think about that electoral fraud in Superior from one of your own elected officials, not to mention possibly and highly likely financial fraud committed in Minnesota. I have never seen anything like this before in my adult life, not from any elected official in Superior. We must ask ourselves, what other illegal activities has Mr. Stupack committed, all to retain a seat on the school board in Superior? What about all the votes before the board? What legal predicaments are now being forced onto this board? I am imploring the board to explore all options with regards to Mr. Stupack. Consider the seat vacant due to falsification of nomination papers. Consideration of expulsion. Consider the temporary suspension until the matter is resolved. Use your tools at your disposal. Please follow the laws and regulations for Wisconsin Elections Commission. Follow Wisconsin State Statute Chapter 120. Follow legal and governance resources for the school board members from the Wisconsin Association of School Board. No one is taking great pride in asking these actions to be done to Mr. Stupack. Now is the time for the board and the citizens impacted by Mr. Stupack's actions to come together to restore honesty and integrity to the Superior School Board. I am calling for the immediate removal of Mr. Stupack or his immediate resignation. Thank you for taking the time to read and accept this letter. Sincerely, Joshua Christie, former board member, 2009 to 2012." And something to say, too. Mr. Asp? Yes.
So when Mr. Jensen, one of the teachers at Northern Lights Grade School, asked me to run for school board back, well, it's a while back now, I took it as an opportunity to
Provide service about self.
And I think if you really think about that concept, that's what school board should be all about. It's a lot of thankless work. It's a lot of long hours. There's meetings and stuffy rooms, and I think that if you're going to be in it, you want to be there for the right reasons. And to me, it really seems like there should have been more representative government involved in this community and not having people from outside the district on our board. It's right in the policies, and I strongly urge the district to adhere to the policies that are provided as part of the district's policies there. So, thank you.
Thank you. There is nobody else listed for public comment for this evening. I want to apologize to everybody here for me, because I failed in a duty to read what I was supposed to after the roll call vote, and I need to still do that. I wish somebody would have stopped me, but it's a way we go. Yeah. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting, as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comments sign-up sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. So thank you for allowing me to read that at this time. We will move on with the rest of our agenda at this time. First item is a report from the superintendent.
All right. I only have one item on my report tonight. It is my annual goals as well as the action plan to work to meet my goals. Every year, our staff develop professional goals going into the upcoming school year, specific to items we want to work on professionally. Tonight, mine include two primary goals. Many are the same themes that I had last year with some revisions. Mostly, I want to continue to be working on building the community relations and continue to build that community trust between our community stakeholders, as well as the school district, focused on the success of our students. So you can see, I won't go through all of the different action steps, but those are things that we've talked about as a board, as part of retreats or as part of other conversations that I've tried to capture. One of the primary things that we are working for, or working on this school year, is getting all of our policies up to date, so I did include that as one of the action items. You'll see, we've got a handful of policies against tonight. We're trying to get updated, and then you'll see a number of second readings next week. So that's one of my primary goals. The other goal is specific around strategic leadership and instructional leadership, really continuing to focus on ensuring that every child of Superior graduates college and career-ready and up from our school system. We've made significant gains in the last couple of years, but I feel that we need to keep that focus, at least at a district level, for another year to maintain some sustainability, make sure those systems that we put in place sustain over time, and they weren't just an increase that we will see decline. So we'll continue to focus on that work. I'm looking at Kate, who's helping to lead our continuous improvement work, but that'll be the primary focus as we go into our shared leadership meetings next week and our continuous improvement plans, thinking about how every staff, every department, every building can contribute to the success of all of our students graduating. I think that's like, that's what we're here for, make sure all of our kids graduate college and career-ready. So those are my two primary goals, and unless you have any feedback for me.
And pull that back up just a bit. I want to think it's important. We had our conversation, yeah, right there is good, in the bold print, every child graduates to college, career, and
Life-ready.
Life-ready was added.
Yep.
We're seeing that more and more in literature. So glad that we reflected that in your comments.
Yeah, we have
Your goals.
Well-rounded students, whatever endeavor they want to choose, whatever that may be. So our job is to get them ready for that. All right, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. First up is the Operations Committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Tonight, the Operations Committee has no action items. We have no discussion items. We have a couple of informational items. First up, we have a presentation by the Cooperative Strategies to review the results of the one-on-one meetings with our board members and summarize their priorities for the district's elementary boundary change process.
I'll introduce them, and then I'll let them kind of take over as they're getting technically ready here. Just one point that I do want to bring up, and I'm sure Justin will talk through this, but Cooperative Strategies has recently changed their name. So moving forward, I think you'll hear them referred to by a different name, and I will have him kind of talk through that a little bit, I think, at the part, at the beginning of his introduction. So I think it's Wolpert is the new agency that will be, that will be replacing Cooperative Strategies, same company, just a name change. Tonight, we have Justin, Andrew, and Diego from this agency that is here to really share the updates that the board has provided individually and a summary as to your priorities as we start this process, this school year. So that, I will pass it to Justin. Can you hear us, Justin?
I can hear you. Thank you. Can you hear me and see the screen?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that introduction. Yes, you're correct that our company has been acquired by Wolpert. I will just modify what you said, Dr. Starzecchi. Sorry about the confusion. We'll continue to operate as Cooperative Strategies. They purchased the whole entire firm, and all of our staff, the people that you've worked with, have been retained and will continue to be the people that you work with. We're excited about this opportunity. That's a conversation for another time, but I think what it does is it just kind of rounds out some of the things that we're able to do, so we're excited about that. Back on to the task at hand, we really enjoyed the opportunity to meet with all of you board members individually. This presentation is going to be just a summary of those conversations and a reminder of some of the things that we discussed, and we're also just going to go back through the timeline and review what our steps are in this process. And of course, we'll pause at the end and see if there's any questions or any additional things since we last met with you all. In terms of our process, we shared this, we shared this with you before, so I apologize for the repetition. What we start off with and what the foundation for the process is, is understanding the boundary criteria that are being used for the process. We can draw maps. We can come up with various scenarios, but if they're not responsive to the various things that tend to be accomplished through attendance boundaries, then we're not really doing a good job. So we want to make sure that as we start our process of drawing maps and creating options, that we have a good understanding of boundary criteria. We look to get feedback, and we've done that from the board, understand where your priorities are, and the next step will be to get that feedback from the community. We're going to be launching a website as well as a survey that community members can use in order to share with us what their priorities are and concerns and other information, which we can then factor into the options that we'll create, and that's the next step in this process. What options are essentially maps, us taking those students and redrawing the boundaries to serve them, but along with that, providing you with data so that you can objectively look at those various map options and see how responsive that is to the various criteria that we've discussed, to enrollment and capacity and all the other things that Andrew will touch on in a couple of slides here. After that, we'll look to get feedback from the community. We're going to be coming to your community and holding a couple of in-person meetings. We will also have another survey that allows folks to weigh in if they can't make one of those meetings, or they prefer to respond through a survey. They'll be able to do that. And then finally, after some fine tuning of map scenarios, we'll bring that back to you for discussion and action on new boundaries for next year. Just in timeline form here, so the board one-on-one meetings that we had were in July. Today, we're here again just to share a little bit about what we heard from you all, and you'll get to hear what some of your colleagues, what they thought. Next month, we'll start working on options for various boundary scenarios, and then we're going to provide those to the community in October. We will have community meetings at that time, and then ultimately coming back to you in November. Again, also going on as we're going through each one of those steps will be a survey and a website so that people can share their thoughts and information, but also they can go to make sure that they keep abreast of what's going on and get some information so that they can understand what you all are reviewing and what information we've reviewed to date. And then, again, we'll be doing community meetings in October. So I'll turn it over to Andrew just to talk a little bit about boundaries and the considerations, and then finally to just talk about those various criteria and highlight some of the ones that we heard from you that really stuck out to us. Did you freeze up there, Andrew? Well, why don't I keep going, and then Andrew can jump in? Andrew, you there now?
I'm here. I'm having a little bit of internet hiccup. I apologize. It's that time of the afternoon when my kids are coming home and doing It's that time of the afternoon when my kids are coming home and and doing their schoolwork, so. I apologize for that. Um, as Justin said, we just wanted to talk about the the considerations and you know, why, why do we, why are boundaries important? Why are they necessary? Um, as we discussed in those one-on-ones, obviously, you know, the the big. Picture is, you know, boundaries are designed to, you know, maximize our schools to to run them efficiently. To ensure that we prevent overcrowding, we've um allow for future growth and that we can. Um, allow campuses to safely and provide uh adequately provide um services to all students. And that we can um better predict future enrollment and allocate staffing and resources equitably amongst our campuses. So what, you know, when we're talking about the closures of schools and the 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 reconsolidation of boundaries. Um, how do we equitably allocate all that staffing and resources among the remaining facilities to best serve all students in the community? Um, when we're looking out boundaries, you know, and and we're we're looking at. Um, redistricting the boundaries, reassigning neighborhoods. It's important to understand that, you know, there are priorities from the community and from the board, but some of these may be in direct contradiction to each other. Um, we, it it may be important to maximize all of our facilities to make sure we have adequate utilization across all facilities. But in doing that, it it may uh run contrary to the thought of. Shortening bus travel times for students, shortening the shortening those commute times there. Um. But the intent of this of these considerations is um to really have a measurable way to compare each option. Some options may be better to handle, you know, the transportation needs of the district, but they may not. Uh, best utilize the the facilities. Um, some may best utilize the facilities, but they may not require um or or provide a a. A a representation of the community as a whole across all schools. And so with these options, there there will. Um, some options will be better at utili- the utilization, some may be better at transportation. And so. We have, these are things that we have to consider when these options are put forward. And so when when we last had our one-on-ones, we did discuss some of these criteria. We had examples on these slides and then we discussed with the board. What these criteria were. And so in in those one-on-ones, what we heard from board members was. We don't want to make certain communities, certain neighborhoods feel like they're being singled out or targeted for these changes that. You know, we understand that there is going to be a school closure and that there are going to be needs for boundary align realignments and adjustments. And we can't single out one community or another to to really. Achieve our goal in the end. You know, it's it's also important to plan ahead with our our boundaries to make sure that we're. Utilizing our facilities now and in the future that we're not, we don't want to come back to this process in two years, three years and. Readjust the boundaries again. We want to make sure that what we put forward today. Is going to provide the best utilization of superior schools going forward for the next ten years plus. Other things that we heard from board members was that we want to provide. Cost-effective, efficient, feasible means of transportation for students to and and taking into account travel time. We don't want certain, you know. We don't want to leave students on the bus for extended periods of time if we can help it. We want to have boundaries that make sense. Um. We want for, again, with the facilities and the utilization, this was. Pretty common amongst all board members. We want to promote balanced enrollment amongst all schools. We don't want to have overutilizations of facilities. We want to. Or underutilization. We want to make sure that every school is. Reasonably handing the proportional same number of students, you know, that to adequately use those facilities. Like a lot of the conversation that we had dealt with that um transportation and walkability of schools. So again, we want to utilize the student transportation source resources effectively. We want to make sure that we have transportation. For all schools and for students who need it. We we do want, you know, it may be important to consider the proximity of the campus. Um, for students and um promote reasonable walking boundaries to, you know, to make sure that. Uh, those the the resources of transportation are there for students who truly need it. And that um we have safe walking boundaries for those schools. And again, you know, some of the other things we heard was we want to maintain a diverse population amongst all schools. We don't want to have so, you know, um. Socioeconomically, you know, may maybe one school or another that's advantaged or disadvantaged when compared. To each other. We want to try and and distribute those populations to make sure that they are accurate representations of the superior community as a whole. And um, yeah, we want to provide that socio-economic balance and relationship in all schools as, you know, if possible.
I think we'll pause there and just see if there's any additional questions or comments. Um, anything that we can. Uh, chime in on or or elaborate on.
Pretty quiet on our end.
Right now.
Okay.
Alrighty. I'll just say thank you very much. We look forward to uh coming back and going through this process with you and thank you for your time tonight.
And Justin, sameie. Um, just to clarify, we'll be pushing out a survey uh. In about a week or two, no, I think it's about two weeks to our community to get the same feedback from community. Similar to what the school board just um shared. Is that correct?
That's right. And let me just run through a couple of those dates. I know that with school starting, there's a newsletter that's going out. August sixteenth is the date that I have. So we're going to make sure that the website is launched and that there is a link in that newsletter so that folks can. Uh, see that that way. Um, and then about a week after is when we're going to launch that survey and it'll run for. It's in my notes here for several weeks. I think it's about a month to a month and a half that we'll have that survey up um and and be getting information from folks.
Then we have you scheduled to come back in September at our regular board meeting, at our committee meeting to share the feedback from the committee based on that survey.
That's correct.
Any questions? Sound okay? All right. I think that's it. Thanks, Justin and Andrew.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next, uh Bobby Matherley has a summer uh projects update.
Okay, he's ready for some good news tonight.
Oh, yes.
All right, admin parking lot, as you probably noticed coming in here, we've got a nice new parking lot, all set up, nice drains.
And not only parking, but like you said, the drainage is fixed to address the leaking.
Drainage and then the waterproofing in the basement. Uh, it's just. It's a really good system.
People not seeing the.
They moved their office downstairs now?
I, yeah, that might work for me, actually. I was probably getting pretty close to doing that when they were kind of taking a little extra time to get it done, but. Everybody's happy now. Um. The high school restrooms projects ever ever, the high school restroom project, everybody's familiar that we had a shortage on the second and third floor of restrooms for our high schoolers. Uh, that project has absolutely been a dream. I mean, I can't, I can't stress that enough. It was my biggest worry going into this summer and they have kept everything either on schedule or ahead of schedule. Just very professional to deal with them and it's been. Really nice. We had one hiccup and that was a roof exhaust. That exhaust all that air out of those restrooms uh was ordered in March and it's not due to ship until November. But luckily somebody on our design team remembers that Hibbing School District had a fan that they couldn't use. So she called up there. They're going to let us have it. She's already got it loaded in her personal vehicle and she's going to bring it down here tomorrow when we got a construction meeting. So. I mean, that's just working out good. Uh, let's see here. High school, I mean, the middle school, we had a heat exchanger that was going bad. We were able to get it to limp by through the rest of the heating season. We've since pulled that out. We've got the new one getting ready to go back in. That'll be done before school starts. Um, we got the tiling job done for the pre-K at Bryant Elementary, pulled up some carpet and put in some some BCT tile for those folks. Uh. Welding booth project, so Spartan Manufacturing was wanting to get some more welding booths in there. We've, we've ordered the booths, uh, the design is done, it's out, we're receiving quotes on them, should. Know more about the cost probably by Wednesday for sure, and I can get that ran through the business office and figure out the next steps there.
Three operational booths, so we're increasing it to what?
We're adding eight more.
So.
It'd be a total of eight more welding stations. It's just four booths. It's weird how they've got them designed, but it's one system for two booths.
Considering what they're trying to do with Spartan Manufacturing, that's been a barrier, so.
So moving into Spartan Manufacturing, we also uh got some help from the shops teams and everybody to move the 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 equipment because that place is starting to fill up with. Lots of equipment that the shop teachers have done a good job at sourcing and bringing in CNC equipment. It's just a lot of neat stuff that's happening in there. We were able to pull those out the center of the room and in-house staff repainted that. That whole room uh same color as this, actually, worldly gray. Know why that's important for me to add, I'm sorry. Uh, we replaced a bad uh intercom system at Bryant as well and then uh. CRG, which is Critical Response Group, those are the folks that were doing the um incident mapping for us, the Critical Response Mapping. For law enforcement first responders. They're on site right now, um verifying everything's accurate with what they've got. And that they've received from us. That's a pretty neat program. It's been built up. And then the four corners waterproofing, uh, that's going on right now. They're expecting to be done before school starts and I'm do everything I can to hold them to it. We don't need equipment running with uh. Kindergarteners trying to focus on their learning, so. But all I got for tonight, busy summer, yes, very busy summer. If I had hair, I'd be back here again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there, are there any other matters that uh may be brought before the committee tonight?
Hearing none, that concludes the operations committee's report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our next report, Budget Insurance Committee, Estevision Tack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I have an action item, uh gifts, grants and requests. Administration recommends the approval of. Gifts, grants and requests received July of twenty twenty through.
Motion approved.
Second. Uh, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Informational items. Uh, I have no discussional items and informational items, Fund Ten Revenue and Expenditure Reports. Dave, you want to touch on this?
So, we're still in the preliminary stages about budgets. Um, we have it at the back or level, we have it down at micro level, so you're going to see a lot of zeros on the budget side. Um, and then, and of course, that's not really going to start coming in, we'll get a check towards the end of this month. So until then, you're going to see a lot of zeros on there. Right now, the estimate is fifty-five or fifty-five million seven hundred ninety-five thousand for revenue that we're bringing this year. And that'll change a little bit depending on if anything new happens in the legislative side and the last year, this money that came in really late, that wasn't.
Does that get, does that change based on our student enrollment third Friday or or not necessarily?
Not for.
Not to this purpose.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, any other matters to be brought forward to this committee? But then that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Up the Teaching and Learning Committee. And. Let me scroll. Oh, Nick, Nick gone?
Is he?
There, Nick?
I am, if you can hear me.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Too loud, probably, okay. All right. So we have no action items, no discussion items, informational items. We have Chris Till Hinsman, Director of Curriculum Instruction on Summer School Updates, Summer Professional Development Days and Staff Development Days.
All right, hey, everybody. Um, typically at the end of summer school in the summer, I do a just really brief recap on how summer school went. I thought it might be good, being that we have some Norbor members, to give a little bit of context and background on what our summer school programming is, in case that's helpful to you. Um, so on this first slide, I know there's a lot of words on that slide, but I wanted to just indicate to you something that not everybody knows. We do have a vision statement for what summer school in our school district is all about. Um, several years ago, a team of people, teachers from all buildings, um principals. Were part of a team that came together and looked at what research says about what summer school programming should be. Uh, Steve, you know, you were a big part of that committee, being that you oversaw summer school at the high school at that time. And in a nutshell, what research indicates summer school should be is it should be an enrichment experience for students. Um, we obviously have credit recovery at our high school level for students that need to recover those credits. But other than that, it really should just be an enrichment experience where students can come and enjoy their time and have some positive experiences in our schools. Um, I, David Coy put together a few pictures from all of the stuff he collected this summer um from our summer school experience. Um, several of these pictures are from the middle school experience, which is an awesome summer school experience for students, especially those kids going into sixth grade. Um, hopefully you noticed on social media this summer, we try to push out a lot of pictures and videos about summer school. And promote what a positive experience it is. This chart just indicates to a few facts about what we offer at each of our levels. Um, as you know, this summer, um, we downsized to only three elementary sites and. Put those students together at Cooper, Northern Lights and Great Lakes Elementary. Um, we did a survey to our staff that worked summer school and we got really positive feedback from them that the three sites worked well. Um, it did not uh decrease enrollment as much as some of us might have worried that it would, so. We were excited about the outcome of the three sites and um will, you know, continue to gather feedback about how that went. It is an enrichment experience. We um do have all of our summer school sites do one field trip. Um, we offer a drama camp that some of our elementary students can attend at the upper levels. And of course, our students uh get two free meals, breakfast and lunch at summer school at the elementary level. At the middle school, it is also meant to be an enrichment experience to, students can choose two courses. That they take, so it kind of feels like a first part of the morning, they can take a class and then the second part, they can take a different class. A majority of our drama camp participants are middle schoolers, so that makes up a big chunk of our. Kids and and our kids at the middle school also get two free meals. At the high school level, we have a few more things. Um, we have credit recovery. Um, where our students can recover credits if they have failed a course. We have Spartan Strength and Fitness. Um, that was referred to as BFS in the past. We've changed the name of that. Um, we have drama camp that our high schoolers can participate in. Our band, when they do all of the rehearsals to be in the Fourth of July parade and they start doing some of their little band camp, getting ready for the start of the school year. Um, we count all of those pieces as part of our summer school um experience. Um, we have started uh last summer and then we did it again this summer, offering a few regular courses for credit. Um, we have offered FIDE and Geometry as regular courses instead of credit recovery. That's not an uncommon thing that schools, our our high schools our size offer, so we have begun to. Trickle into that area and see how it goes. And then we, of course, uh offer our high schoolers free meals as well. So that's what programming looks like in our district. Um, I did want to just put a few graphs together for you about what summer school enrollment has looked like. So I went back to two thousand twelve and you can see our summer school enrollment over time. Obviously, twenty twenty, we did not hold summer school that summer. Um, if there was a another line on this graph showing our student enrollment. Overall, at the elementary level over these years, uh what you would find is that from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-three, actually, I did the. Numbers a few times, we have decreased our overall and summer, overall student enrollment at the elementary by exactly four hundred students. So, um, while you can see that our students, uh, summer school enrollment has declined over time. Our overall enrollment at the elementary level has also declined. I think there are some other factors that come into play. Um, but the fact that fewer students open to summer school than um they were in two thousand twelve and those are things that we are continuing to look at. At our middle school level, you can see that our enrollment has stayed pretty consistent over time, over the years. Um, and at the high school level, um, you know, it's fluctuated a little bit, but in general, um, stayed up there. And then last, I just wanted to share with you a little bit about how summer school funding works. So I'm just going to say a few real surface level things and then. David can chime in and add something. The first thing that you should know is that we do receive funding. The first thing that you should know is that we do receive funding from the state to help offset the costs of summer school. Um the the phrase that's always used in the summer school guidance from the state is that summer school is meant to be a break even experience for your school finance, for your school district financially. Um you shouldn't be charging students to attend or not spending money on supplies and transportation for your students so you can make money on summer school. But you also should be using the funding that you get to support the kids during summer school. Uh we are required to get, have licensed staff at all levels um as part of the the funding that we receive from the state. Attendance does matter during summer school. The reimbursement that we get from the state to pay for summer school is not just based on the number of students that sign up for summer school. It's based on the number of students that actually show up and then are in the seats during the summer school time. So there's a lot of calculation that has to uh be put together in terms of like minutes and hours of of enrollment and participation. And then the last thing that I'll say is that, uh like I already mentioned, class sizes, supplies, transportation, all of those things are really a balancing act when you're planning summer school. Because again, we want to spend the money the state gives us on the students during summer school, but not um use it as an opportunity to make money or go in the hole. So David, is there anything you want to add to that?
First, I just want to give uh credit to Crystal and the rest of the admin team. I was one of those that was worried about, is it really gonna go down for summer school? They were able to figure out programs, working with the YMCA and giving that out to the community to get kids to show, so so credit to them.
Well, we offered a couple of different things this year to try to help with that. One is we offered transportation to community parks where the Parks and Rec Program was happening. And we also offered uh wraparound care for school age students at the elementary level at Great Lakes for families who wanted transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Cause picking up your kids in the middle, they could be a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
A barrier, so yeah, a handful of people.
I think so.
And as as Crystal mentioned, um since I'm more on the budget side, I'm always looking at the financials. Um and I've had, heard people have signed up. I have friends who've signed up, hey, I'm gonna sign up for summer school, but my kid's probably not gonna do it. Makes you sweat. Staff, like all.
Yep.
School, and then if they don't go to school, we still have that staff. So we really need to, I I think it's gonna be looking more historical stuff and percentage of people that sign up made it. But it also means you have contingency plans, because what if a hundred percent show up and be your staff for seventy-five percent? So that's one thing that really I've been working, because I always get that out to the community. Uh what I would really love is everybody sign up and then we guilt them to show up. Like Crystal said, the the state will give us money. We get funding from this, and that's based off of our uh government limit worksheet. If if I can give you one thing for you guys to know for today is forty percent of those kids that go to the, or forty percent of it. So each kid is worth forty percent if they show up every day. And that number goes directly into our revenue limit worksheet, which then defines how much we made of funding. Like Amy said, a majority of our funding is in the third Friday count, but that forty percent can be a significant amount of money. Uh ten thousand dollars a kid, it it can make a break. And like Crystal said, we really want to break even. This is, our hope is to ensure students can just break even at that point, so. Yeah, and it's, oh, without enrollment. And then all the staff that, my kids went to summer school, uh Spartan, I said B F S, absolutely loved it. Elementary student who says, no doubt, I'm not gonna go, wouldn't miss a single day after you went to first day, so.
One thing I don't think you mentioned in that one slide is we do also, um we are a partner to the YMCA with Camp. And so we do, we are, in in our partnership, we do um receive revenue for that partnership and working with those students. We have staff that go out there and work with our students out of camp too.
So any questions about summer school? Okay, hopefully that helps give you a little background if kind of understanding that is a little bit new. Um and then I had two other quick updates. The first, I think, is summer professional development. Earlier this summer, I shared with you, here's all the stuff we're gonna be doing this summer. And so I just wanted to share with you a little recap, even though we're not really done with the summer yet. Um we offered thirteen book studies this summer, which is something that our staff have given feedback about wanting offered to them. We had a hundred and forty teachers take advantage of that and sign up to be part of book studies. Several teachers signed up for multiple book studies. We had them on a wide range of topics. Um we had about seventy, seventy middle school and high school teachers sign up to do P L C curriculum work on their proficiency tables and their formative assessments and summative assessments and proficiency tables. Um we had teachers gathering today for some professional development around grading. We have teacher clarity training uh happening later this week. And then next week, our shared leadership team, which is about eighty teachers in the district, plus all of our administrators, will be gathered for three days at Cooper next week to do goal setting and look at data and come up with plans for the year on things to improve in the school. So that's a little recap of summer professional development at last. In the next few days, Amy is going to be sending out an all-district email to the staff telling them about our upcoming staff development days. And you know, what she'll say in there is that we'll have a schedule that'll include building level time on those staff development days on August twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. We will also have time where teacher teams are meeting. We call it subject area committee time or grade level time. Um and then, of course, we'll have the big welcome back on the morning of the twenty-eighth, so.
And we have time built in for teachers to get ready for school.
Yeah, we'll have our teacher work days and then our open houses are that week as well, so our teachers will be preparing for that. And then school starts on September first. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal, and thanks, Dave, for adding the content. All right, up next, we have Erica Hutton Parker, Assistant Director of Student Services, with the presentation of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three's seclusion and restraint data.
Okay, before we dive into data, I want to take a second to introduce Dina Hagan. She's our new Director of Special Education. This is her first board meeting, so big welcome to Dina. We're very, very lucky to have her um on board with us.
I'm on the spot, what do you think, so? I thought I won the job lottery. Glad to be here.
Well, tonight I get to share um some very exciting data with you. As you um may or may not remember, uh the Department of Public Instruction requires us to report out our seclusion and restraint data to our boards by October first every year and then to the state by December first. And so our data is pretty exciting because um once again, we have reduced the overall number of seclusion and restraint incidences in our district uh for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Our number of restraints stayed the same, but um our number of seclusions did go down. So we're at a total of thirty-seven instances for the year. Um and then, and I don't know if you want to scroll down, we are required to segregate this data by building. And so you can also see um where our numbers of seclusion and restraints happen within our buildings. I think it's really important to focus on on some of the positives, the positive steps that we've taken as a district over the past few years to get these numbers down. And so I just wanted to touch on a couple of our proactive strategies uh that we've utilized. We've expanded deeper, uh excuse me, expanded verbal de-escalation training to our paraprofessionals and certified staff across the district. Each building now has a student crisis de-escalation team. And those teams are trained in de-escalation strategies as well as C P I. And uh our building teams are engaging in that training in the next couple of weeks to get ready for school. We've also updated our reporting systems within the district and providing step-by-step guidance for reporting and follow-up after an instance of seclusion and restraint. And so.
I just need to give props to our our principals and our staff in our buildings. We know that the past couple of years, kids coming back from COVID have faced some pretty significant challenges. And yet our teams have done a phenomenal job of helping um those students who are in crisis. And and we just have some really awesome things to celebrate with our data this year. And I just want to point out that as part of the policy agenda tonight, we'll be adapting, we're we're proposing the adoption of seclusion and restraint policy um to align with the state statute we currently follow.
And we've been following that policy um for the past couple of years, so.
I've noticed Bryant's not up here.
Um if 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 they didn't have an instance of seclusion or restraint, they are not on the report.
Thanks.
Does that make sense?
Thanks.
Four Corners isn't either. Okay, so then they didn't have an instance. You're welcome.
I think it's part of the alphabet.
Thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica, and again, welcome, Dina. Any other matters? Hearing none, that concludes my report. Mr. Olson, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next up, we have our Personnel Negotiations Committee, uh Brooke Taylor.
I have one action item tonight. Administration recommends approval of the August twenty twenty-three New Hires and Separations Report.
Will you approve? Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. I have no discussion items, no informational items, so that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Well, thanks for working on having more on your agenda than.
Yeah.
All right, our next is our Legislative slash our Committee Report, Diana Smith.
For the Legislative Committee Report, I have no action items, no discussion items, and a couple informational items. Um WASB resolutions. The WASB Resolutions Book is now updated and posted online. Resolutions adopted by the annual WASB Delegate Assemblies set the policy direction for the WASB and its lobbying efforts. Board resolutions for consideration for twenty twenty-four, Delegate Assembly must be submitted to WASB by September fifteenth.
Can I just speak to that?
Yes.
Um this is just a reminder that occasionally our board drafted resolutions, we brought it forward in January to the convention. So if there is a desire for us to do anything, we need to bring that forward for the next board meeting.
Yeah, say it's got.
In September.
Yeah, cause I go to the Delegate Assembly meeting in first week of October.
Okay.
They are, but.
Right.
Melissa.
But it has to be approved by board by our next regular meeting, so.
Okay, I haven't really heard any requests from anybody on any specific topic topics, but I'll bring that up. Um Governor Evers signs reading legislation into law. Governor Tony Evers today announced that he had signed Assembly Bill three twenty-one related to updating early literacy, literacy instruction in laws act is twenty twenty-three Act twenty. From the governor's announcement, the bill relating to literacy draft and coordination with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction makes several comprehensive updates to literacy instruction in the state designed to help improve reading and literacy outcomes for K to twelve students. And there is more information available. Want to speak to that at all or?
Just that this is still new, we're still learning the implications of this. I think everybody can agree that we want all of our students reading at grade level. That has an impact across all subject areas and um so, and it applies to our college career writing and life writing goals, so.
Sure, Kate and Crystal will be all over this.
Yes, they will, they will.
Are there other, any other matters that need to be brought before this committee?
The uh Governor Evers today, Transportation. So if any of the board members would like to volunteer as a bus driver, you may do so now in the state of Wisconsin.
I don't know if you'll want me.
Taking application, so.
Okay. I do drive a big bus myself.
Almost experienced, yeah.
That concludes my report.
Yes, Diana. Our final agenda, uh Committee Report tonight is our Policies and Rules. Mr. Gallier, do you need water?
Uh maybe by the end of this. Yeah. Um so we have several action items, all action items, actually. Um I'll read each one individually and ask for motion for each one as we go on, so. Administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Yola recommendations and in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. The first, it'll be the first reading of Policy five one one one, eligibility of resident and non-resident students. Fair motion.
Will you approve?
Second.
Motion second. Got it open? You have any comments on it? Anybody comments?
Thanks, I know after our discussion that we have, I went and looked a lot closer at the expulsion part that's uh further down and stuff. And boy, it's it's spot on.
Yeah, and actually, I was reviewing some expulsion statutes this week in preparation for something else. And it's very clear about students who are expelled in other districts have limitations.
Yes.
Any other discussion on that? I know third discussion, um all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next one is first reading of new policy five five zero point zero one, conduct in a virtual classroom. It is a new policy.
Will you approve?
Second.
Motion second. There it is.
A little bit of context, this policy really was a result of COVID and the fact that everybody was in a virtual classroom. So they developed a policy for districts that they could choose to adopt. It primarily aligns to our code of conduct, but it just explicitly states that you are still a student. And and had to have to abide by our code of conduct.
Any further discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Next one is the first reading of another new policy, five five four zero point zero one, investigations involving suspected child abuse.
Will you approve?
Second.
Second, there it is up on the board, any discussion?
Just to reiterate, this policy and the following policy are pretty clear in statute what we're required to do. We already have a process in place. This is already spelled out in our handbooks. Uh this is just a matter of putting this in policy as well.
Any other discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and eh, yeah. Next one is the first reading of new policy five six three zero point zero one, use of seclusions and physical restraints with students.
Will you approve?
Second.
Just a second. There it is, any discussion on that one? Any discussion whatsoever? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. First reading of Policy sixty-five ten, payroll authorization.
Will you approve?
Second.
Just a second. There it is. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, none, first reading of Policy seventy-three hundred, disposition of real property.
Will you approve?
Second.
There it is, any discussion on that one? Any other discussion on that one? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading of new policy seventy-five sixty, naming rights and naming school facilities.
Will you approve?
Second.
Motion second, uh any discussion, Amy?
Uh I just wanna, I just wanna um clarify, this is not a Yola update. This is an update we're bringing forward for your consideration. We've had some inquiries about what this process could look like for our school district. And so uh we've taken a look at some sample policy and fail this one makes the most sense. And so that's why we're bringing it to your attention today.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll slow down for you, Nick, sorry.
What are you saying?
Next one is first reading of new policy eighty-three ninety, animals on district property replacing ninety-one sixty point zero one.
Will you approve? Second.
Hey, motion second, there it is up there.
I have a couple of things.
Yep.
One is, I will say, I'm glad we're bringing this forward. I've had a number of requests in the last several years to consider a policy specifically around therapy animals and how that should look in schools, um as there's been requests for that purpose. Um one question that came, uh Mr. Gallagher and I were speaking, kind of talking about this in the draft mode. A question that we had that I'm gonna um ask Kyle to speak on is can you tell us a little bit about how would we handle a situation eh where we potentially have a service dog? Uh cause that's under this policy as well, um and potentially a student in the same classroom or the same area that potentially has a, an allergy or or other.
Yeah.
Conflicting, I guess what I'm trying to say, conflicting accommodations.
Right.
Students.
And it's a, it's a question of priority. And each uh the way that the law treats that is each case has to be handled on a case-by-case basis. There is no uniform trump where the service animal trumps somebody, say, with an allergy to that. Because in some instances, depending on the breadth and width of the. Because in some instances, depending on the breadth and width of the issue, you can solve it on an individualized basement basis by having somebody in a different room or different things like that. So um, there isn't a hard and fast rule as long as there's a reasonable interpretation.
Do you have any suggestions for any additional language that we put in here as the principal's primary, primarily the one who would kind of make that decision at a school level? Do you have any recommendation on any language that should be added for that purpose?
I
Or no?
Uh, I, when you brought that issue up before, I thought that perhaps something along those lines that I just indicated could be added, just so that.
But in the event there's a conflict, it'll be addressed on a case by case basis.
Right, because in that context, people would have some idea in advance instead of coming in kind of thinking that they had the upper hand of one way or the other and would understand that it has to be addressed on an individualized basis. Um, I think that's, that's kind of the status of the law, so it it would probably serve the purpose of notifying people. But I think even as written, the law still, so. We could include something.
I'll kind of look to you guys, let me talk, we have any verbiage added to the mandate, see?
Uh, yeah, like in our discussions, my thought was, you know, it, some kind of discussion on what a principal or administrator would do, such a fact that, say, a student with an allergy and there's a difference between a service dog or in the same room together, one of them's got to leave, that they would have um, the same learning experience that they would have had in the classroom that they were in, um, so that they're not essentially put on a Zoom classroom or something like that. Just some kind of more guidance instead of, I guess I don't want one kid negatively affected by.
Well, a good, uh, a realistic scenario would be you'd have two students perhaps like in a third grade classroom. And so both parents don't want their child to move from the classroom, they want the other student to move. So it would be up to a principal to decide which student goes to the third grade class. That's a situation where we'll need Kyle to weigh in, I guess.
So yeah, I guess I'd just like to see more on the guidance side.
Maybe add a sentence, I can add that, share that with you in draft form. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Kyle, will you help me with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Here, I got a note. So with that one, um, I guess we can still vote on it, but uh.
You can vote on it with potential rec requests that those changes get added next week.
Yeah. Um, any other discussion on that one first? Hearing no discussion, um, all those in favor, same five by saying aye with the additions that Amy might make for next week?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right, hearing none, pass, next one. Uh, first reading of a new policy eighty-three ninety-five, student mental health services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Just seconds. Up on board, any discussion on that one? Any discussion at all? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any All right, moving on, first reading of policy ninety-five hundred, relations with educational institutions and organizations.
Move to approve.
Motion second. It's up on the screen there, any discussion on that? And just so, I think you explained it good in our meeting, this is in relation to outside organizations uh, doing surveys or data collection within the schools.
Yeah, higher.
And so I guess the only other thing I would want to add is, there's a section for seeking parent permission of using your students' information or data or you, or taking surveys.
Yes, yes, so uh, parents have to be notified, they have to provide permission. Also, the university has a pretty strict policy when it comes to research and they have to follow the university guidelines as well. So you'll, you may see these things as a parent, you know, we have colleges in Scholastica, we have U M D, we have U W S all we have really good relationships with, so sometimes they ask us to participate in research. Um, so this protects our teachers of place.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, last one, first reading of policy ninety-six hundred, staff student participation in community events.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Nick. Um, it is up on the screen, any questions, comments, Scott?
I would say, I guess it aligns to our handbook language as well.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's all the action items for tonight, there are no discussion items, no informational items. Um, I will say that all the stuff that we previously approved last month will be on next week's board meeting for the final, really, final approval.
You can delegate, so you can see what was from June or what was from July and what was from August.
Right. Yeah, next week, Steve gets to read those, he gets to read everything, last month's and next month's.
And in the meantime, I'll make sure I get a draft of the policy change we talked about tonight.
Right, any other matters? Prefer.
I think it's important to acknowledge, maybe that we we appreciate the time and the such pushing this out. Um, we've had, we get time to review these and stuff. And then as board members, we have time to either get ahold of Amy or Ed or myself, you know, with questions that you might have that you want to have discussed and stuff, so.
Yeah, this is some of the most important part of the board, so we're trying to do this in a thoughtful, comprehensive, timely manner. And thanks to Ann, she puts in a lot of time getting these ready for you.
I conclude my.
Thank you. So two things before we close, um, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge and thank all of our directors and tenants tonight and welcome you back. Uh, I know you've been here most of the summer and everything, uh, doing your work, but to have you back in our meetings is quite meaningful. Um, the dedication that you show to uh, to Amy, to our entire school district is greatly appreciated. And David goes without saying, the 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 positive image that you are displaying day after day, time after time about things that are going on in the school district. People are talking, our community about it, people are seeing it. So yeah, thank you enough for the work that that you're doing and look forward to what this year will bring. This does conclude the committee of the whole meeting, our next regular school board meeting is next Monday, August fourteenth at five P M right here in the administrative offices. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance.